Are we ready, ladies and gentlemen? Okay. Good evening and welcome. I would invite you this time to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always lovely to see a nice contingent of students at our meetings here. They're enthralling. I know you'll love them, so stay tuned here.
Mine'll start tomorrow.
Right. You can follow on the, obviously, on the screens over there, the agenda for this evening. We will move to district highlights. Dr. Henson.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Toby Ford Nelson tonight. Toby, if you would come forward, I know you have a special presentation tonight, and you will make an introduction, please. Thank you.
Dr. Henson and the Board of Education, I want to thank you for continuing the tradition of the Faculty Purchase Award. The piece that was selected this year was by Wendy Taylor. And Wendy, would you come on up? I'll have Wendy hold her piece. Wendy has been an elementary art teacher in the district for years and currently teaches at Belinda Elementary. And as you can see, she has continued to foster her creativity. She talked about that after her own children had grown, that she continued to create her art. And she enjoys creating subjects, using subjects in her pieces that have beauty that she wants to honor and share with the viewer. The painting that was selected, as you might have guessed, is a scene in Montana, a river scene, and includes a fisherwoman named Jennifer and the family bird dog that also points fish. So Wendy, I want to congratulate you, and what an accomplishment. Congratulations. I think they want to take a picture with you and your piece.
Firstly, I would like to congratulate you as well and give you something a little more substantial than a congratulations. We appreciate this very much, and we were all looking at this going, really? The dog is pointing at a fish.
Well, my son, we have four children, and they all graduated from Shawnee Mission Schools, and they're on their way in the world, doing fine. And one of our sons is in Montana, and he's a fly fishing guide. He's in Chile now, and he's in Montana this summer. And he met a lovely lady, and she also became a guide, and they have setters, because he likes to bird hunt. And so, anyway, one of them, red, this one's red, they all go with them when they're fishing. They sort of get in the boat, and they are part of the deal. And yeah, points fish.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will enjoy that for many years to come. Thank you so much. I'll leave it here, so you can all enjoy it through the meeting here. And thank you, Toby, as well. Okay, we will move on to the report by the superintendent, Dr. Henson.
I think we probably should note, I think the dog was a part of our gifted program.
Absolutely. Another Shawnee Mission product, right?
Very, very talented. Reminding you of a couple of things tonight, projects that we're working on. We're still working on the potential repurposing of Antioch Middle School. And so by the end of this month, we would anticipate a preliminary report from the architects and engineers that are working on the potential repurposing of Antioch Middle School. So that's an exciting adventure, and we'll certainly see what they recommend. We have continued to work on our, continuing to work on our safety and security updates. Remind you, we have five architectural firms that are working on several of our schools. This would be Phase One of the implementation of safety and security procedures. That is still ongoing, and certainly, we would anticipate a report back to you at the January board meeting, and maybe more than a report. We have already started budget meetings for this next school year. And so even though we are almost to the halfway point of this school year, we're working on the 15-16 budget. So you will hear more about that in the coming weeks and months, but those proceedings are certainly underway. We do not have initial information yet in relation to the report from the demographer that is anticipated in February, so that will have a very distinct impact on a number of things we do and certainly our strategic plan. But the demographer is still working together that information. This last week, six of us from the school district made a trip to California for the Apple Executive Briefing Program, looking at what Apple technology could potentially bring to the Shawnee Mission School District. So there are some exciting things that we're talking about in that regard. Folks from Apple will also be in the district this next Monday to meet with us for some follow-up conversation. So as we look at technology in the school district, and what we might be looking at in the future in relation to comprehensive technology, integration, and implementation, Apple is certainly a platform that we're looking at extensively, and they gave us a lot of great information. It's amazing what technology can do today. So the question for us is in relation to the right fit, the timing, and certainly, do we have the right staff, the number of staff that we have to pay for through operational funds to really help us integrate the technology. So Deb and Sarah, we're on the trip last week, had a chance to see firsthand what's going on in relation to technology, but really some exciting things that are going on. So stay tuned. We certainly could bring back to you a proposal in relation to technology at the January board meeting. This last week, Mr. DePiero and myself did also meet with representatives from George K Baum. And so if we are ready to move forward in January with technology, safety, and security, obviously, we need a mechanism to fund. And so we're working on the GO, the General Obligation Bonds, we've talked about issuing through the capital outlay account. And so those things are still in the works, they're finalizing documents and information for us. So in January, we could be ready to present to you several final proposals and the funding mechanism to move forward. So we'll give you a lot more information over the next several weeks as we receive and try to finalize the plans, really, that we're working on, but really some exciting adventures that are going on. Those are some issues in relation to bricks and mortar, technology, those issues. But I also want to take a little different venture tonight, because I think, as you all know, we've had a tremendous amount of tragedy this school year at West High School. So I had a chance today, building principal Dr. Crane sent me a video that was produced at West, really, an inspirational video, but obviously, it causes us to stop and reflect as well. And so as we talk about these things tonight, that are really beneficial and they're really important for the district, our mission as a school district is about every single one of our students that walk through the door. Sometimes, those students aren't able to graduate from the district because their life ends prior to that great opportunity. And so as I looked today at what West had put together for their students, it's about 15 minutes long, and so it has some length to it, but I think it has a great message and reminds us that we're about every single one of our students and what great kids and great employees we have as well. So Terry, if you'll run that for us, please. I will warn you, there's some volume control problems around. At one point, it gets really loud. Prepare.
Waking up and having my whole family with me every day.
My family and my friends, and just like being healthy and being able to do what I love to do. I'm really thankful for all the people who like to support me.
I really like to sing, and that really just makes me feel glad about lots of things.
I love listening to music, it lifts my spirits.
You must be born again.
I love reading poetry, like writing, writing helps me a lot.
My friends, my family, my cats make me really happy. Performing makes me happy and singing, being on stage.
I feel the need to like put everything out there, like just give my fullest to everything, just like you did all the time, like dedicate myself.
It's kind of changed my outlook on life. It makes me feel like I need to remember all the things I have to live for and not take anything for granted.
I'm more thankful for things in my life and people in my life than I was before. I am more aware of just how little time I might actually have. I want to use my time the best I can.
Don't hold anything back. Just keep, give everything you're all, live life to the fullest.
Be happy. I don't think you'd want us to be sad. Try our hardest when we can. He put his heart into everything, and I think that he would want others to do the same.
My advice for those still grieving is to find something that you love and work as hard as you possibly can to reach your goals.
My advice for those who are still grieving is just to remember that now they're in a better place.
For those still grieving, I'd advise them that you're not alone and stuff, and it's hard, but you can get through it.
It's affected me in a positive way by basically showing how much you need to care for all your friends before it's too late and they're gone. And it's also affected me by giving me more creativity for the music I make and that me and him used to make together. And it's kind of just, in a positive way, it's basically feeding him through me and our music.
It's really pushed me to work as hard as I can for the things that I want.
It affected me in a positive way because I've come closer with a lot more people that were affected by his death also.
This holiday season, I'm looking forward to spending time with my family and really appreciating that time that you get to spend with them, because it can be very short.
That there's still people I could still talk to about it, and how people are still coming close, keeping people intact, there's people I can share with.
This holiday season, I'm thankful for my friends and my family, and they're all there for me, and it's great.
I'm definitely thankful for the talents I've been given and all the friends I have, because without them or anything, really, I don't know how I would have made it through the passing.
We have had a son that was born with liver failure when he was an infant. And at five months old, we were told, your son needs a liver transplant or he will die by the age of two. I knew nothing about organ donation when I was told that, nothing. So we had to learn all that we needed to, because we were the first local family to receive a pediatric liver transplant here in Kansas City, and that was in 1996. At 11 months old, Luke received his life-saving transplant, and he's now a senior in high school. He's 18. But he's alive today because another family's tragedy became our family's miracle. My son's alive, Luke's alive today because of an eight-year-old organ donor by the name of Aaron. And Aaron's from Olathe, but he was on a camping trip in the Ozarks with his family when he suffered a severe allergic reaction, and he never recovered from that accident. And his parents made the courageous decision for him to be a donor. And that's why we do these, that's why I do the work that I do. They will tell you that there was nothing good about their story. They lost their loved one. The only good thing that comes out of their story of tragedy is that they have saved lives by their loved one becoming an organ donor. Some of the donor families see organ donation as their loved one continuing to live on, to continue, continuing to do good. A lot of teens tell me they want to be donors because they like the idea of when they die and their life can no longer be saved, that they can save up to eight lives through organ donation and help up to 50 people through tissue donation. And a lot of us like the idea of that when we can no longer, you know, help ourselves.
This is Austin Chambers, and most inspirational student here at Shawnee West to me has been Jonathan Ship. I've known him a really long time. I knew him back, actually, he actually is a cancer survivor. He had leukemia. I remember in second grade, most of the time, that he was in hospital most of the time, and I remember going up and visiting him every day and going and seeing him, hanging out, and I remember when he finally beat it.
Preet Singh has been a really influential person in my life. He's been a really great friend since elementary school, and he just, he works hard, and I'm really grateful for the friendship that we have.
I think the most inspirational student at West is Elijah Boyer, and I say this because he's probably the hardest-working person I've ever met, and he does not let anything get in the way of his goals.
I would choose Nick Bannan, because last week, when I got cut from the basketball team, he texted me, telling me that it was okay, I didn't make the team, and making sure I was all right. And it just inspired me, because before he said anything else, he already knew that I was going to start working hard on baseball right away.
I would say Mark Sableton. I've been lucky to have, you know, a couple classes with him this year, and just being around his good attitude, being happy all the time, you know, being a funny dude and just being, you know, like I said, just happy, a positive attitude in life. I've been lucky to be around him more this year.
Adriana Clark is the most influential person to me in this school, because she's the nicest girl I know, and she's my best friend.
Ricardo, Gallego Torres, he's our boyfriend.
Hey, Jennifer Commodores, and she's always there, and is always kind of silly and weird, but always ends up helping me in no matter what situation it is.
My best friend Samantha Bayling's been the biggest influence on my life here at West.
Captain Riedel, she is a very hard worker when it comes to acting stuff.
I think the most influential person at school is Matt Connell. He's involved in a lot of stuff and just takes a lot of responsibility, and I think he's a leader in our community.
Margaret Loggden, because she leads by example.
Emily Herbert's, oh, she's a very positive person, like she lights up like anyone's day, who she talks to, and whatever she does, like when she sings or she runs, she's always passionate about it, and I look up to that.
I think I'm the luckiest person in the world. I've got a great job at the best school, I've got wonderful students, terrific friends and family.
My favorite thing about Shawnee Mission West are the students. I have incredible students this year. They make my life easy, and it's really fun to come to work.
I am thankful for having a great family that loves me.
I'm thankful for everyone that's in my life today.
I'm thankful for my friends and family.
I'm thankful for the West community.
I'm thankful for my parents, my family, my friends, my sense of sight, my sense of hearing, my sense of touch, my sense of smell, my sense of taste, my speech, my heart, my lungs, my immune system, my hands, my legs.
I'm thankful for Lindyak.
I'm thankful for my friends and family.
I'm thankful for basketball season.
My tears, my disappointment, my fears, my pain, my sadness, my happiness, the sun, the sunset, the moon and the stars.
I'm thankful for my friends and family.
I'm thankful for life.
And another thing that I love about Shawnee Mission West is the very caring staff and administration that we have here.
Look all ye lovely saints above, Diana ha, great with love, ha, great with love, is thy weapon to remove. See, see your mistress, please you cease, and welcome, love with love's increase, love with love's increase, Diana.
We have an amazing student body, community, and family here at Shawnee Mission West. When I think of inspiration, I think of people that reach beyond the limitations that life and possibly society has put upon them. So West is definitely an inspiring group of people to me. I think with everything that we've endured over the last several months, and beyond that, even into several years, I think West, the relationships, the strength that has come from the people that have overcome the pain and obstacles that we've gone through, has left me dumbfounded and inspired. It's a special group of people.
What inspires me about West is the opportunity to come here every day and work with such an amazing, talented staff and kids who care so deeply about each other.
The most inspirational thing about West is that, you know, through all this hardship we've gone through, we've still been able to look to each other for strength. When you're having a bad day, you can look to your faculty, your friends, whoever it may be, but in this community, you can look to each other for strength. And if you're having a bad day, someone will always pick you up and make sure they put a smile on your face.
Here are some tips for the holiday season. Make sure to spend time with your loved ones.
Be careful on icy roads.
Make sure to buckle up. Don't text and drive. It can wait. Give more than you receive. Live each day to the fullest. Show your appreciation to others. Vikings have a great holiday season.
We are a family.
We are a team.
We are together.
We are strong.
We stand together.
We are one.
And we have some of our stars in the audience tonight. I thought you were going to go undisclosed. Yeah, I think what's really important about this video to me, and our adults and students at West confronted the issue of loss and grief that they've gone through this school year during this holiday time in a very positive way, and a great message certainly for our kids as well about things to focus on during the holiday season. You know, a lot of things, as I mentioned, that we do in this room in the district are very important, but yet maybe not as important about the lessons of life. And I think this video, for me, is about lessons of life, and just what a great story this time of year, from again, from our adults and students at West. And so it's very important. And so for those of you at West, congratulations. We're very proud of you. And certainly, for the parents of our kids in the district, they're going to celebrate this holiday season without their kids. I think it's important for us to reflect on that as well, to recognize every day is such a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henson. We will move on to open forum. We have one speaker tonight, Nancy Fritz.
Members of the cabinet, Dr. Henson, or excuse me, members of the board, Dr. Henson and cabinet members. On behalf of the members of NEA Shawnee Mission, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish every one of you a very enjoyable holiday season, and of course, a very prosperous new year for all of us. Thank you, and happy new year to you.
Thank you, Nancy. Happy new year to you as well. Okay. We'll move on to approval of minutes for the special meeting of November 25.
So move.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Denny and Mrs. Neber. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero for the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of November 25. Move approval. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda.
I move for approval, adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Matt. Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, then. Agenda has been adopted. We'll move on to approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, is there a motion for approval then?
Move approval.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Is that Mrs. Levens? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero, which moves us forward to letter O. Action on human resources. Dr. Henson.
Thank you. We have two action items tonight. The first one, I recommend the approval for resignation for a reading teacher at Marion Park Elementary without imposition of the $1,000 resignation penalty.
Move approval. Seven. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield, Mrs. Neber. Thank you, Mrs. Bissfield, Mrs. Neber. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Henson.
Second item, I also recommend the resignation of one of our teachers, French teacher at Shawnee Mission South without imposition of the resignation penalty, please.
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to action by the superintendent. Q1. Dr. Henson.
Thank you. The first item is the agreement, or it's actually the contract we had approved this last month, but not the contract. And so we actually have the approval of the broker services with CBIZ. Mr. DePiero, anything you want to comment on this? It's just routine?
Uh, we went through the proposal process and this is...
Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions by board members?
Move approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bissfield. Any other discussion? Okay, saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Q2, Dr. Henson.
Second reading. As you are fully aware, this is just the readoption of the board policy BB regarding the school board legal status.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Q3, Dr. Henson.
Also the second reading, the revised board policy regarding our self-retention regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Neber and Mrs. Bissfield. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, and lastly, Q4.
Q4 is also the second reading of this policy. It's in relation to our workers' compensation, GBGD.
So moved.
Second. Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to reports to the board. Dr. Henson.
We have our monthly board financial report. I would be certainly happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions regarding the financial report? Okay, um, then S2, Dr. Henson.
The next report is in relation to energy conservation program. So we have some great information we'd like to share with you tonight. Mr. DePiero, if you want to introduce, please.
Bruce Crossell's here with Amy, our, our energy analyst. Bruce and Amy, you wanna come up? Are you gonna run the PDF on? PowerPoint?
Thank you, Mrs. Wintering.
Since Amy's new to the, to the district, she came to us in August. I just thought I'd introduce her, give you a little bit of background. Uh, she has an architectural engineering degree from K-State. Uh, she has eight years of experience as a residential and small commercial, uh, energy, uh, consult consultant. She's a lead professional, uh, and she's a certified energy auditor. She's also affiliated with the Kansas City chapter of the Association of Energy Engineers. So we're happy to have her on board. Um, I'd also like to introduce Bruce Palmer. You may remember Bruce. He was our energy analyst for the last three years. He's now assumed the role of our maintenance supervisor. But with that, I'll turn it over to Amy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, this is an annual report that hasn't been given for just a little over a year. So I'm gonna catch everybody up on what's been going on with our energy conservation program. And just a brief overview of the, um, policy that the board put in effect in 2010, almost four years ago. But the Shawnee Mission School District made a commitment to reducing energy use and the conservation of natural resources. Uh, this reduction of energy allowed the district to divert money to other more important priorities. And to accomplish this goal, the Energy Conservation Management Program was established. And Bruce Palmer established the program. And I came on board in August of this year to maintain and enhance the program. And this program has accomplished some significant savings for the district over the last four years. This is a, just a chart from the, um, utility analysis software that I use that shows our electricity savings. The first year is the 2008, 2009 school year and we use that as our baseline year. So this was before the energy program took effect. The first year after that, when we started getting into it, we saved 6% based on that usage of 2008, 2009. And we've dropped down to 20% percent in the following year and we've leveled off at about 25% in electricity savings.
Uh, one thing to mention is the baseline that we've established does account for building additions and closures. And so that's all calculated within that baseline data. And you might wanna explain that a little bit, Amy.
Exactly.
So we're, we're comparing apples to apples.
Right. And this, the baseline also accounts for if we had continued to use energy at the same level of that, of that year, that blue line shows where we would be. The green line shows where we actually are. So, and, and we do account for changes in building. We account for, um, increases in utility costs. And, um, even new equipment will make adjustments. If we get more efficient tillers and things, we'll put adjustments for those in there as well. This shows where our natural gas was saved. This chart, um, is a little more illustration of how the baseline accounts for the weather. Um, since, since we, gas is almost exclusively used for heating in our buildings. Where you see the dip in the top blue line, that's where we had a fairly warm year that winter. And we also like to see that our actual usage follows that baseline usage to show that we didn't use excess energy that year. This is our water. Since electricity and gas has been the main focus the past few years, the water has just kind of floated along. And, uh, even that 5% savings in this last year, that's 4 million gallons of water. We use a lot of water in the district. And that's one of the focuses going forward is to figure out where all that water's going and how we can save more. This is a combined total energy usage. If we combine gas and electricity together, this is our total energy usage for the district. Again, we're kind of leveling out at about 25%. Dollar saved. This is the really good number. If using, with the energy conservation program, we have avoided spending about eight and a half million dollars over the last four years on utilities. So that's money that has been diverted to other uses. This is just, this summary of what we had before discusses the fact that, um, these percentages do include rate increases, building square footage changes and things like that. So our goals going forward, we wanna focus on energy conservation as the, the habits and the, um, the actions taken by the building occupants to reduce energy. These are the things that our students, staff and the volunteers can do in the building to reduce consumption in our buildings. So we, we are developing guidelines regarding use of lighting, personal appliances, electronics and other plug loads. So we wanna have guidelines and suggestions for how they can reduce the use that way. We're gonna want to implement daily shutdown procedures for classrooms. So when teachers leave their classrooms, they know that the lights need to go off, unplug unnecessary equipment and things like that. We're also distributing conservation information through a seasonal newsletter. The first newsletter went out in October and that, that is on our website. We're also gonna use the web, utilize the website to make that information more readily available to our, to our occupants. I'd also be interacting with students. Bruce Palmer did a great job with that. And I'll continue going to presentations and doing classroom activities and working with their, um, school programs. And then whenever we have building achievements, we'll wanna recognize those as well. At the building level, we're gonna again develop guidelines for shutting the buildings down at the end of the afternoon and the evening, scheduling building functions and things like that. I would like to assemble a coalition of building energy volunteers to get together and talk about what's working in their buildings, what doesn't work in their buildings when we start talking about conserving energy. We will perform and oversee an after-hours assessment of buildings. Walk through the building after hours, first early in the morning, on the weekends. See what lights have been shut off, what things are still running. It's a good time to listen for fans that are running that, um, probably should be off when no one's in the building. So that's the plan is to do these once a year for each building. We also will have an Energy Star score for every building. And we'll provide access to that for the administrative staff. And this is a sample of an Energy Star portfolio score. This is Tomahawk Elementary. They scored a 79. So a building that scores 100 is very, very energy efficient. And a building that scores a zero is not very energy efficient. And the average building is about a 50. This is a way for the administrators to keep track without having to analyze the, the utility data because that's my job. This'll make this a little easier for them to see what's going on. I update this monthly. They can log on, look at their score, see if it's changed from the past month or if it's staying about the same. A score, by the way, a score of 75 is an Energy Star certified building and we do have eight of those in the district already. So energy efficiency are the things that we can do with equipment, controls and systems installed in our buildings to make them more energy efficient. But these are the expensive things. These is what costs money for the district. So what we wanna do is focus on, on which buildings use the most energy. So I, um, rank the buildings by categories, total, total energy usage, the expenditures per square foot, the total utility expenditures, and then total watts of, um, incand, of high wattage light fixtures like we have in gymnasiums. Those are the things that use a lot of energy, especially in high schools. They're on all day long, all week long, all weekend long. Those are easy fixes for reducing energy usage. So we consider those as well when we're examining these top energy users. Once we narrow that down, then we can start looking at what we should do to, in those buildings to reduce energy use significantly. So we look at controls for lighting, controls for exhaust fans, look at heating and cooling systems and how we control those. Maybe tweak them to make them more energy efficient than they are now. We also wanna look at getting rid of all screw-in incandescent light bulbs in the district. They're phasing those out. So we wanna start putting in LED or compact fluorescent, something that's more efficient. There's no reason that we need to have those in there if we can get them into the supply stream and get more efficient lamps in. They last 20 years, some of these LED bulbs. So that way we're also reducing maintenance. We're gonna look at domestic hot water delivery and also increased focus on water conservation. This is something that Information Services is an example of energy conservation measures that have been implemented. Uh, IS started working on some of these things, um, 10 years ago even. But, um, turning monitors off when they're not needed. Um, they have the computers shut down in the evenings, turn back on in the mornings. So they're not on all day. They have also, um, done some analysis of the computers and servers to understand what the energy impact is of the, those systems. They've reduced the number of, um, physical servers on site. So we have less electricity draw from those things sitting there running all day long. And they've also re, reconfigured and remodeled the, um, the server room to improve the airflow. So they could turn the air conditioner down. So that the way the air was blowing on the servers allowed them to turn the temperature up and still keep those servers at the proper temperature. We're also looking at conservation of resources. We have 13 schools that are now participating in our food waste recycling program. We all have two schools that are going to start in January. So we'll have a total of 15 buildings. In 2012 and 2013, we diverted 116 tons of food from the landfills. We also have all of our schools participating in paper and/or mixed recycling. In fact, uh, by the end of, by the end of this year, we'll have all schools but three will have mixed recycling. So they'll be able to recycle cardboard, steel, plastic and aluminum. The only reason the other three schools do not is just space constraints in their parking lot. So they're gonna stick with the just paper recycling. But for everything that we put, put in that recycling is something that does not go in the trash. So then we can start thinking about reducing the number of pickups at our facilities or um, making the size of the containers smaller. And all of that saves us some money that we can divert to, to other uses. Public awareness. These are the awards that we won in the last couple of years. We had a Mid-America Regional Council presented a sustainable success story for our food compost program here in 2012. Apache Elementary will be our ninth Energy Star certified school. All the paperwork has been submitted for that. We're just waiting on approval from the EPA. We have JOCO Green Business Awards for Brookwood and Briarwood and Tomahawk in 2012. Kansas Green School of the Year, Brookwood and Blue Jacket Flint. And the US Department of Education Green Ribbon School, Brookwood in 2012 and Blue Jacket Flint 2013. That's what I have.
Anyone have any questions? I don't think so. Thank you very much, Amy.
Yeah, one of the projects we're working with right now is converting some of our gymnasium lighting to LED lighting. Uh, I believe we're doing that at Indian, Indian Hills.
Indian Hills, yes.
Indian Hills will be our first school that we convert over. Uh, and that'll be done, uh, through, uh, in the spring of this year. Uh, we've identified another 20 or 25 buildings that currently can, uh, be converted from the high sodium lighting to the LED lighting. And Amy's tasked with the responsibility of determining, uh, what best course of action to take to replace those and also the light levels necessary with the LED lighting. And so, uh, there's a lot of work that she's doing, uh, uh, upcoming in the, in the spring. Uh, she's been on the ground for about six months now. So I think, uh, she's got all, or four months now.
Yeah, don't exaggerate.
She's been on the ground four months now. So she's still, she's still making it out to the individual buildings and meeting people. But, uh, I think, I think she's had a very successful start and we're going to, uh, continue the, the program, uh, in earnest as soon as, as soon as we get going, uh, in the, in the spring.
Thanks, Mom. Are you changing the lights in Indian Hills in the old gym or the new?
Is it the old gym?
Old gym.
Or the new gym?
I think the new gym was the better.
The new gyms don't, we did not have the LED standard for the new gym. We, they have T8 light, T8.
Uh, T8 or T5, yeah.
Which you probably don't know what a TA or T5 is. But they're not the high sodium lighting. They're the more efficient fluorescent lighting. Uh, so, uh, we're looking at the new LED, uh, lighting because, uh, in the last several, in the last year or so, that pricing has come down to be more affordable. And so we're, we're taking a look and, and Indian Hills will be the first school we convert over.
I just have one more quick question if you don't mind.
Sure.
I apologize. Um, when you're in a building, and this has happened to me on, on several occasions where the temperature is way out of sync, whether it's on a weekend or whatever, is that, I have, this is like an urban legend maybe. Um, is, is the temperature controlled off-site or in that building? How is that temperature set?
It depends on the building.
Okay.
In many cases it is, is controlled off-site, but there's some buildings where we can't do that and it is onsite. So if you have a specific building, we can talk about it.
We might.
The majority of buildings are, uh, uh, controlled through our central facility, uh, with, through our EMS systems. And the, the high schools have, uh, the controls set at, uh, the ONM, uh, shop along with the majority of other, but this building, not so much because it's older. All of the, all of the new buildings are centrally controlled through the EMS systems that flow back to the ONM, uh, facility. And so, and I think all the high schools currently are controlled.
I guess I would, I would just, uh, remind that our, our winter setback temperature, our target is 69 degrees. Uh, in the summer with cooling, we're looking at 74, 75 degrees is kind of our target temperature. Are there gonna be deviations from that? Yes, there are. Um, we do, uh, try to, uh, put in, uh, weekend setbacks, overnight setbacks. We may lower temperature from 69 to 64 on the weekend or overnight. During the summer, we may raise it to 80 degrees. And that's really where we've been able to get a lot of the savings that we've achieved is through the, through the temperature control. I would offer that we've got 5.2 million square feet. We have a lot of mechanical equipment. And so we do have problems. We do have failures. And so, um, even though our target may be 69, is every space gonna be 69? No. It's not.
It was a point of information. Any other questions that anyone might have? Great. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I would like to know what is going on with the teacher, French teacher... I would like to know what is going on with the teacher, French teacher at Shawnee Mission South. Why you're asking for a resignation?
She is leaving, and she just asked that, because she is resigning. There is usually, if it's of very short notice, there's a $1,000 fee that is attached to that teacher for that short-term resignation. Correct me if I'm wrong here, anybody. But she is resigning. She is not being let go. We are just saying that, no, she does not have to pay that, because I believe she's following her husband to Switzerland or something like that. You're welcome. Is there any other information that I was incorrect with supplying that young man? Thank you for asking, though. Are you a student at South?
No, I am a student at Shawnee Mission North.
Okay, very good. Well, I think we have a lot of North students here tonight. Do we need to sign something for you guys at the end of this meeting? I have a feeling. Let's see. We have the president of the student body. Oh, we have the president of the student body here as well. Hello, good evening. Thank you all for coming. Well, we have board comments, and then we are going to adjourn to executive session. But after board comments, we will entertain you guys rushing us, because we'll be gone for about half an hour. We don't really need you to wait for that, probably, okay? So we will have board comments, and then please feel free to come forward. Any of seven of us can sign your sheets, I believe, if you need something signed to take back to school. Okay, all right. We will move into board comments then. Mrs. Neber.
Well, I had the honor along with Joan of attending the KASB convention, of which there was a lot of information. And I dispersed that. Actually, Terry dispersed it for me at your, at your chairs tonight. But there was, there's a sheet that has a front and a back that has black and red answers. There's a sheet that has just black and red answers. This is the very short bullet point sheet. The two-page one is a little bit more Mark Tallman in description. And the longer one is definitely Mark Tallman. So, but I wanted to share some of the quick bullet points, because I thought they were interesting. Says how much of the state budget goes to K-12 education. And it says, when counting all state spending, K-12 state aid is less than 25%. About 50% of the state general fund, the major operating fund of the state, goes for K-12 education. How does state and local funding of Kansas education compare to other states? In total funds, Kansas spends $1,000 per student less than the national average. More than average comes from the state, less comes from local property taxes. How is Kansas education funding compared to inflation and other costs? Total funding to schools has increased, operating funds have decreased. And a lot of that, if people don't know, has come in the form of capers reimbursement for an underfunded issue at the state level. The increase that they have put forward as far as saying administration has increased is really about paraprofessionals in the classroom and aides. It has nothing to do with administrators per se or teachers. It is really paraprofessionals, and that's to help when you get large class sizes or if you have specialized students with special needs. How has school funding changed since the Great Recession, if we can remember that? There has been an increased reliance on local funding. Fewer dollars are available for the classroom. Funding to improve the solvency of capers has increased. Have student academics' results changed with funding? Student achievement has mirrored funding changes. It goes up when funds increase and down when funds decrease. How effectively do Kansas school districts spend the money they receive? And I think this is very important for our public to hear. Kansas ranks 12th in the nation in the percentage of current spending on instruction and has one of the highest ratios of achievement to spending. We do more with less. What is the potential impact if the plaintiffs win in the Gannon K-12 school finance lawsuit? Property taxes will decline, school spending will increase, less than the amount of the recent income tax rates. What changes have districts made in staffing and budget priorities? Schools have fewer administrators, lower operating cost, and more money going to the classroom. Why have school districts' ending cash balances increased? Since 2009, many districts have increased reserves for the same reason as the private sector, concerns over financial instability. And then finally, just stay informed with what is happening in our legislative session that is going to be coming up. And I've also supplied you with some background on the Gannon case from the KASB's lawyers and a little bit of the history about who was involved and why. And then there's a wonderful report here received from, I think, the guru of the state finance, which would be Dale Dennis, who can give you answers beyond anyone that I know. And he still can find new things. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. But it talks about base state aid, how it has increased, where it goes, LOB and everything like that. So it's just some bullet points and information that would be helpful to any of us and all of us. And it was a pleasure representing the board at the convention. It was very nice. And Joan did an outstanding job as her legislative person. And I think everybody walked away feeling pretty, pretty good about this year's delegate assembly.
Very good. Did you have anything, Mrs. Levens?
No, it was a, I just said it was a good group, and it was a good experience and lots of great information that was shared. Kind of an uneventful delegate assembly.
Is that information online at kasb.org, some of it, at least?
Some of it maybe, but you have it here too.
I understand, in case anybody else wants to look at it.
In case you need late-night reading and you don't have your computer in front of you or whatever. But I think some of this is online for you to have easy access.
Very good. Comments, other comments from board members? Well, I guess we're recessing to the holidays, so I would wish you all a very safe, happy, healthy holiday. And with that, Mrs. Goodburn.
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel and to discuss matters concerning security, information, and procedures. The meeting will reconvene at 8:30. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose no? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, students, I would invite you to come forward, and we will sign whatever you need signed.